All right, so as it's twelve oh one, I just wanna commence this joint hearing of the Maintenance Development Committee. As well as the Public Safety Committee chaired by LeVar Click and the State Federal Government Committee chaired by. Caterie Walsh. And the reason why I decided to call this joint committee. Was primarily of all the train derailments that were in the news in the last thirty days, obviously, we all. Watched with really unexpectedly unexpectedly. The events in Ohio and what happened out in eastern Palestine and the tragedy out there. In regards to the train derailment and then just two weeks later in Ohio, there was another train derailment. And then this, I believe, three weeks ago, there was another train, there was a train derailment. Here in state of Massachusetts and I thought it would be appropriate, really, just simply to assess. Our readiness here in the city of Springfield and perhaps Commissioner Calvi can give us some insight as well as. Our readiness in western Massachusetts in general on train safety. About twenty, no, it would have been more than thirty years ago, the city of Springfield was faced with a chlorine fire. And I had looked up those articles and at that time, that was probably our largest. Chemical disaster here in the city and I was surprised, I did not know that twenty thousand residents had to be evacuated from the city. And the bravery of our first responders, our firefighters and our police at that time. To go into the chlorine factory and deal with chemicals. It was extraordinary and I think believe part of the success the fire department had. In dealing with the chlorine fire was they knew how to deal with chlorine and they had some idea of of how to approach a fire like that. But a lot of these trains are carrying chemicals, I don't know if the fire department is familiar with and they should. Should they be familiar with it and and how do we approach it as a municipality, as a region? And as a state, so we are ready and. Ready to respond as quickly and as professionally as we should be known for. And so again, I just wanna welcome Commissioner Calvi to the meeting and thanks for taking time out of your schedule, I know it's a busy one. And putting the meeting together, I did not know this, but Commissioner Calvi. Before he took the position here as Fire Commissioner here in the city of Springfield had worked. For the state for several years and has developed a somewhat of an expertise in hazardous materials. So I guess that might be a great place to start, Commissioner. Maybe you could provide some background, not just to hear the committee members, but also the presses on the line. And to give the council just a little bit more of your history and your expertise in hazardous materials.
Sure, I was on the state hazardous materials team for a number of years in that time. In my time on the team, I went to several specialized trainings. So I went to actually, I've been twice to the Rail Safety Center in Pueblo, Colorado. To become a tank car specialist to deal with rail and tanker emergencies. I've also been to the. The center in Anniston, Alabama, where you train on dealing with chemical emergencies, weapons of mass destruction and. You train with live nerve agent, so that's part of the training down there, so I've made. I believe two or three live CW entries in the training facility in Anniston, Alabama. So I'm pretty well versed with hazardous materials and rail safety and. The workings of the rail and interstate commerce with what's going up and down the highway system. So in the Springfield Fire Department, we have right now two hundred and sixty-four uniform members. Everyone is trained to nine, to the standards of nineteen ten, one twenty, which is. This and we fall under the operational level of responder designation for our training. Which means we can control hazardous materials leaks from a defensive posture, which is diking and damming. Entry where there's no. Threat of airborne type contamination along those lines. Once you get past that type of leak, we work with the state's hazardous materials division. And that's, those are all trained hazardous materials technicians, I used to be on that team. And the team consists of forty hazmat technicians that are in this district. And if it gets to be a larger incident, then they call other districts in and team up and make a larger team. The whole purpose of the state hazmat team is it's a modular team that can be built up or scaled down based on the size of the emergency. Now. We have members on that team at the Springfield Fire Department. And that's how we would mitigate a larger scale train disaster like happened in Palestine. Now, the good thing that we have going for us is as opposed to what happened in Palestine is this is a low speed track area. So the trains aren't going through this area at high rates of speed. So we've had derailments from time to time here in the city where something will hop off the tracks and you're not getting a ten or fifteen car pileup. Where everything spilled all over the siding, so that's a big positive we have here. We have CSX rail line going through the city as well as Amtrak. Amtrak is just a passenger rail, CSX is a nationwide mover of freight. They have a yard in West Springfield, we, I've been to the yard in the west side several, a couple times over the years for hazmat calls when I was on the team. So and you'll have other hazmat calls that have gone out over the past decade in western Mass. For small derailments up and down the sightings around the western Mass area.
Well, that's, that's very interesting information, Commissioner. Could you tell me just a little bit more, you said you took training on train disaster derailments in Colorado, is that? Is that, is that a training that all police chiefs go, excuse me, fire chiefs go through or is that, how did that come about?
I went to that because I was a hazardous materials technician and the state was trying to send all hazmat technicians out to. One of these specialized training programs at the time.
And just another question that you may not have answered for, so is that like a certificate course and if it is like. How many, what do you estimate, how many in Massachusetts, how many fire chiefs go through a course of like that? So it sounds pretty, it's terrific and it sounds pretty unique, but I was kinda curious so that. I did not know that you had that on your resume as well.
Yeah, it's a, I've been out there twice, they're both week long courses and you do get a certificate when you complete the course. I can think of four or five fire chiefs that were on the hazardous materials team the same time as I was who have been through the training. So there are several chiefs in the state that have been through the same training that I have had, most all of them came off the hazmat teams.
Wow, terrific, just a basic question on the, on the hearing, alright, so if there's a train derailment or freight derailment here in the city of Springfield. This is just basic, I mean, who's in charge of that? I mean, is it, is it the state government, is the federal government, is the local, how does that, how does that work?
So if emergency happens in the city, city of Springfield, the city of Springfield is in charge of it. So we would work to mitigate the situation in conjunction with the rail owner CSX. And the chemical manufacturer, if it was a chemical spill, because those are the true experts, they have the true expertise when dealing with the chemicals. So the fire department, the police department would respond, we'd assess the situation. We would take any steps we could take from a defensive posture. We'd call in the state hazardous materials team who would fall under the command structure and report through incident command to myself. And we'd come up with a plan to mitigate a larger type incident if depending on what the leak was. Now, if it's a petrol chemical leak, the fire department can handle that in-house. If it becomes a leak that's gonna be a gaseous leak or something like that that would require class A suits to enter. We would have the hazardous materials team make those entries.
And Commissioner, would you know in Springfield, and I don't know if these stats are kept. But how many train accidents happen within the city in a year or even in western Massachusetts?
In the past ten years, off the top of my head, I can think of maybe five small train accidents. You don't hear about most train accidents, the train accidents that happen, they don't, they aren't really newsworthy, a car will. Come off the tracks, they'll bring out the equipment, they'll retrack it and they'll be on their way. The only time you really hear about rail accidents or when you have a catastrophic failure like you had out in Palestine, Ohio. Where several cars came off the tracks and then you had a fire.
Do you know if the city or even on the state, we had a derailment here in the state a couple of weeks ago. Is there a place where these are reported, like a place where those stats are kept?
The Department of Transportation would keep those statistics.
Understood, understood, along with your department. Does the city of Springfield, do you guys have joint trainings with the police department as well? I mean, would the police department have any role in a train derailment type situation?
The police department's main role would be crowd control and scene control to make sure that we weren't getting a lot of. Bystanders trying to get into the scene and making sure everything was secure and then if we had to have a. Evacuation order given or a protect and place order given, they'd be helping out with that, helping with the evacuation or making announcements for people to stay inside their homes.
And part of the reason why I ask that is obviously you have an expertise in this, I think expertise better than most. But would the police or even the rank and file firefighters? Would they have like a, just the general understanding of the rail yards here in the city or even. If you're called to other towns like West Springfield for assistance. Are, do you guys actually go to the rail yard so they're familiar with the track, the trains, so like, you know, obviously rail and. Train tracks and rail yards and dangers just in of themselves and is our rank and file fire department. Familiar with the local rail and rail yards, curiosity?
Yes, we train with, we train on train incidents from time to time, everybody's had familiarization with train safety and how to work safely around the tracks. We do several fires a year along the sightings which require us to interface with both CSX. And Amtrak, we have their dispatch numbers in our dispatch center, so we are able to communicate with the train dispatchers whenever needed.
And. A further question, this is budget season, the state, state house was actually here in Springfield, the Ways and Means Committee. Yesterday and is there anything we can do as a council or call the delegation? To the Springfield Fire Department that you can think of that your department might need in way of equipment? Or money for training or to, or I suppose equipment especially for situations like this?
So right, at the moment, right now, we are well equipped to deal with the disasters we're trained to deal with. So at this time, really not, we've received, been fortunate to receive some grants over the past several years. Where we've purchased area monitoring equipment, which is. Meters that we would place out in the event of a rail type incident like you've described, that would measure different. Chemicals or in different values that we would place out to circle a big area where we could do then chemical monitoring where plumes would be going and things of that nature. So at this time, we're pretty well equipped to deal with what we have for our training levels.
And just another question, and when you think about train safety, you don't realize how much. How many miles of track are in here in the city of Springfield, but we do have. Quite a bit of train track and my question to you would be when these. Train carriers and I think the problem out in Ohio was they were. Carrying a chemical for vinyl siding and it was difficult to contain. Did the train care, the carriers have any responsibility to tell the city or even tell the state what they're bringing through here or, you know, is, I mean, who's. I know it's not the Springfield Fire Department, but what, to your knowledge base, how do we know what chemicals are coming here through the city?
So there are thousands of gallons of chemicals that traverse the city on a daily basis. Both with the ninety-one corridor, the mass pipe corridor and the rail system going through the city. The, there is no requirement for the rail or any trucker that's trucking something through the city to notify the city that the chemicals are coming through. With they, if a manufacturer was the manufacturer in the city, they have to give us notice that they're manufacturing and they have to file what's called the tier two annually. To make us aware of what they have on scene for volatile and reportable chemicals. But the rail is not required to report that nor any DOT hour that's coming through the area. That would have almost become unburdensome to try to track that on a daily basis to track what was coming through the city. In terms of carriers carrying things through the city.
Would they have any responsibility, the responsibility to the state if it was some kind of a chemical that they thought that was really volatile? I don't know, I mean, have you heard of anything along those lines?
There are certain chemicals that you can't ship through urban areas. And there, there's a list of certain chemicals that they don't ship through urban areas just because of their volatility. What you see a lot of going through here, when you look at train cars, you'll see propane going through, you'll see. Some oxidizers going through, a lot of fuel oil, things along those lines. Every train car, if it's carrying a hazardous materials cargo, has a placard on it, so if it were to come off the track, we'd be able to tell what it was. From a distance, they're on each side of the car, so. Depending on which way the car was sitting, you'd be able to see one of the placards to be able to ascertain what was inside the car. Also, each train in the, in the lead locomotive carries a consist. Which is what the train is made up with, the conductor is responsible for that, so in the event of a train accident. The first people we'd be looking for is the engineer and the conductor, so we could get that consist to see what the train was made up from. And where, if any, the hazardous materials cars were on the train and what they were.
And Commissioner, do you see any need to establish perhaps like a. An emergency hotline with any of these carriers, I know when we talked to Chris Signoli, the major complaint. When you're dealing with these train freight companies, is it so hard to find somebody in charge? And so it's so difficult to communicate with some of these train companies, they, I mean, the phone is always going to voicemail, so to speak. And is there, is there, is there currently a hotline or like if something were to happen that you, you know, you get a. Call the train company, find out what's on this train, where you know, the fire department's going in, we need to know now the next five minutes or some, something along those lines.
We'd be able to get that right away from the consist on the train. But also, we do have a direct line right through the CSX and Amtrak Dispatch Center, so.
And you personally feel that's, that's, they're. Pretty well in communication with first responders here in Springfield?
Yes.
Yeah, and beyond that, is, are there any. Along these train lines here in the city of Springfield, I live over in Liberty Heights and sometimes you can hear the train going by at night. And I know Mercy Hospital is somewhat close to the train tracks, you got the Poland School, is there any like. Schools or hospitals that maybe should be concerned about or they have a fire drill or just your. Just your understanding or just if you can think of anything along those lines or any businesses that are. Close to the tracks that should be aware of train safety now that we have a heightened awareness of it due to the Ohio incidents.
Everybody who was along the train track should have a awareness of train safety is i.e. staying clear of the tracks. Knowing that freight cars don't stop on a dime, you know, the, the main railway accidents we have here in the city have been people being struck by trains. So that, that's the biggest issue we've had in recent years is that people have been struck by trains or. Falling asleep on the tracks and been hit by trains, tried to run in front of a train. You have a lot of accidents where people trying to jump on and jump off trains have unfortunate outcomes due to those issues.
And just one last question for me before we get to the other committees. Do you see any need or if we need any funding to conduct joint trainings with other fire departments? I guess particularly West Springfield has a major train yard in West Springfield. In case that our own firefighters are called over there and need a familiarity with that train yard.
Train, train safety is train safety, whether it's on this side of the river or the other side of the river. We're, we've become familiar with the locomotives and the emergency shut off procedures for locomotives. And how to deal with those issues and basic track and rail safety, so I don't really think that's needed at this time. Plus, the hazardous material team is a unified team made up of many different departments. They train together monthly, they often train in the rail yard. We train from time to time with other departments as it is, so I think we're pretty well versed in that section.
Well, I'm from your testimony this morning, Commissioner, it's reassuring to know that we have. An expert in train safety and the fact that you're certified in hazardous materials regarding in and around. Trains and freight carriers, I really think that speaks to the professionalism here of the Springfield Fire Department and. You know, it's something that I did not know and the fact that you are so well versed on how to respond to these accidents and that. It's also reassuring to know that we have a line of communication with these train companies and freight carriers and. It sounds to me that this is something that's at the top of your agenda and. So I'll have my other colleagues, I know we have Caterie Walsh, we have LeVar, we have Maria Perez. I know they've been invited to listen in and, and, and listen to the testimony, but if any of my colleagues have any questions. I see Caterie's hand in the queue, so Caterie, go right at it.
Well, thank you, Sean, for calling this meeting, cause as you say, with the instance that happened in Ohio, I think this is. Much more on everybody's minds and I did not know either, Commissioner, that you had such a great background in. Hazardous and train safety, it's definitely reassuring. And I think that that should be made known, Sean, when you do your committee report, but how about passenger trains, I mean, do. I'm much more familiar with those, and, and is it easy, I have always heard that Amtrak is difficult to work with. Have you had any interaction that way with passenger trains and Amtrak?
We deal with Amtrak from time to time when there's events taking place at Riverfront Park because you have to coordinate the train crossings and. We haven't had any real problems dealing with the Amtrak or anything like that, we've always found them to be quite responsive to questions and needs.
Oh, that's, that's good to know and you've been doing this for a long time, what would you say the biggest changes is? I mean, is there changes in equipment or is there changes in techniques to deal with these issues when they come up?
The biggest change is how we monitor them because now there's area monitoring rays that we can set out and monitor a large area. For air quality and chemical presence, so that's a, a big change, there's also the new drone technology so we can put drones up in the air. And look at a derailment from an overhead view or any type of accident from an overhead view and see. If there's any runoff taking place that we're missing or anything like that.
And, and does the fire department have drones?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, and do you travel on trains?
I've traveled on trains before, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I myself like trains, well, I, I think it's good to know all this stuff, I feel reassured that if anything happens. You would be able to handle it for Springfield and I wondered if the surrounding areas, they would call on Springfield, Springfield would be like the center. For anything that happened, would that be true?
Not necessarily, they'd call on the state hazardous materials response team, you know, we may be called to supplement manpower, but. The main response agency that's gonna come in past the local level is gonna be the state hazardous materials response team.
Well, this is all good information, thank you for sharing.
I actually worry more about a highway incident than I do about a rail incident.
And when that happens, is it other jurisdictions or?
Well, we have a lot of highway in the city and there's tank cars going up and down ninety-one all day long. So rail is oftentimes segregated more towards the outskirts of the area. But you have, you have highway in city street that goes, that's everywhere and you can never tell what's gonna be in a tank car.
Right, but and within the city, there, there's certain, is there certain travel that's not allowed? As Sean talked about, you know, things that they hazardous things that are carried?
Well, like, we'll regulate certain carriers that are doing maintenance. And I don't wanna get into them at this time, but there's certain things that will regulate what time they upload and offload product.
Good to know, and do you get a lot of calls from citizens who are concerned about any of this stuff?
Not really, we'll often get calls for the smell of natural gas, that's our biggest type thing that we deal with gas smells.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you came to my house and helped me with one, yeah, it's a scary thing, that smell of gas when you have it. You know, good to know there's people that you can rely on. Well, I'm all set with my question, Sean, and I will comfortably get on the train next week.
Thank you, Caterie, we also have LeVar, I don't know if you have a question, LeVar, or all the questions?
No, I'm all, I'm all set, BJ, I'm sorry, sorry, Chair, thank you for hosting this meeting. But I think Commissioner Calvi done a great job explaining. I'm sure if I have any further follow up question, his line is always open, so I can let him call. And I thank you, Counselor Kern, for hosting this and very informative and I appreciate it.
Thank you, LeVar, and he's Chairman of the Public Safety Committee and as Counselor Perez, if you have any questions, Maria, if you don't, that's fine. Anything at all?
She's, you're muted.
I think you have to unmute yourself, Maria, if you wanted to ask a question.
You gotta unmute yourself. Can you unmute her? Can't hear you.
Hey, Counselor, I just have to run to another meeting, so thank you again for hosting this.
Thank you, LeVar.
Could you hear me now?
Oh, no.
Thank you, Maria, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna say thank you, this is very important, specifically that what's going on with the train derails. And it's nice to hear that we do have a plan in place. It answers, the questions that were asked was real good today and the answers is a conform to the community that we do have a plan in place. So thank you very much for this meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, and thanks for all the participants and again, thank you, Commissioner Calvi, for your time and it was very informative and. We learned a lot today and again, we're all reassured by the expertise the Springfield Fire Department has. In train safety and train derailments and ability to communicate with freight carriers. So I think this is a constructive hearing and again, it's state budget week next week and anything you need from the state. Uh it's state budget week next week and uh anything you need from the state, uh by way of the Springfield City Council or there anything you need. By way of the city in regards to equipment regarding train safety, certainly uh. Uh always call upon us and we're gonna uh support your department as, as much as we can. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your time.
Thank you, everybody, have a great day.
This concludes the hearing.
Thank you.
You, thank you.
You, happy, everybody.
Happy Easter.